Okay, I'll call the Londonary Planning Board meeting to order for April tenth, two thousand and thirteen. And I want to point out, if we have an emergency, you need to evacuate. This room has two exits. They're on the right-hand side of the room, and up the audience. And if we need to evacuate, you have to proceed to the exit closest to you. Move away from the building, and don't come back into our fire officials. I've instructed everyone to do so. Mr. Chairman, please rise, and pledge allegiance to the American flag. Pledge allegiance...
...to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Chris is traveling. He's the only one that I know of that's not coming. And I'll appoint Lisa to vote for Chris, and I'll appoint Maria to vote for Scott until he arrives. And actually, Laura. So I'll have Al vote for Laura until she arrives.
Okay.
And gives us six voting members, and actually, seven with Mary now. And we have a quorum. So first part of the meeting is administrative board work. Second part of a meeting is continued plans, of which it is Pillsbury Realty Development, continuing from March twenty-seventh. We'll go to administrative board work, where we got our business done. And I just want to note that John Vogel is sitting in for Cynthia May. Cynthia was unable to make it tonight. We have one, two, actually, three plans for signature, a voluntary merger, minutes of the twenty-seventh meeting, and discussions with town staff. So, hey, John. So we're getting eight voting members now.
It's running a little late.
That's all right. Mr. Chairman, members of the board... John, you got Ms. Darlene's childcare.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This plan was conditionally approved back on February sixth. That was a request of Darlene Cudaro, the applicant. The owner was Londonary Congregation of Jehovah Witnesses, the owner of MAP sixteen, excuse me, MAP six, lot forty-seven dash one. This is for a formal review of a change-of-use site plan. Again, the plan was conditionally approved back in February. Staff can report conditions of approval that have been met and recommend signature of the plan.
Mr. Chair, seeing that conditions have been met, I make a motion that we authorize the chair and secretary to sign the plans.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion by Mary, second by Lynn. Any discussion by the board? Singed on, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Absentees, here is affirmative. And the Ms. Darlene's childcare plans will be signed at the conclusion of the meeting tonight.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, second plan for signature is for the Gennard subdivision, MAP fifteen, lot one-ten-dash-five, at Two Leland Circle. Conditionally approved back in December of two thousand and eleven. Staff can report conditions of approval that have been met and recommend signature of the plan.
So moved.
Okay.
Second that.
Motion by Mary, second by Lynn, for the Gennard subdivision plans. Discussion by the board. Singed on, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Absentees, here is affirmative. And the Gennard subdivision plans will be signed at the conclusion of the meeting tonight.
Third item for signature, Mr. Chairman, is a voluntary merger on behalf of T-Mobile, Beale Rawland, MAP twelve, lot thirty-four, located at twenty-eight Kelly Road. This is to correct an error on the tax map. Tax map currently shows the, there's two lots, those being thirteen and seven acres. And through the additional research by the surveyor and the development of the property, it was determined that it was only a one acre, one lot property, one piece of property. So again, this is a voluntary merger to correct an error on a tax map. Staffs looked into it and are in agreement with the voluntary merger.
You're all set.
Correct. That voluntary merger art is in the read file for your signature.
I got it. What the motion will be for the chair to sign the notice of merger of parcels under RSA six-seventy-four, colon, thirty-nine dash A.
So moved.
Second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mary, second by Lynn. Any discussion? Singed on, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Absentees, here is affirmative. And I'll sign the plans, make sure I do it properly.
Last set of plans for signature is the plan for T-Mobile, again, Beale Rawland, MAP twelve, lot thirty-four, twenty-eight Kelly Road. This was a request of the Beale Revocable Trust Omni Point Communications for a site plan and conditional use permit to construct a hundred-and-forty-six-foot wireless communication facility and associated accessory equipment. This was conditionally approved back in April of two thousand and eleven. Staff can report conditions of approval that have been met and recommend signature of the plan.
So moved.
Second, and Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion by Mary, second by Lynn, for signature plans of T-Mobile, Beale Rawland. Any discussion? Singed on, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Absentees, here is affirmative. And the T-Beale Rawland, well, plans will be signed at the conclusion of the meeting tonight. I have the minutes for the twenty-seventh meeting. Make a motion to approve those.
I'll make the motion to approve as amended.
Okay.
And I'll second that motion.
As amended. In seven seconds, as amended. Any discussion by the board? John.
All right, just one thing for the record. The, if I could call your attention to page thirteen, on line thirty-five. Cynthia May wanted me to point out, the minutes are correct. It's an accurate representation of what happened. The question was asked if the town's existing zoning ordinances will be observed when developing the individual subdivision and site plans? The question that should, that should have been asked is, will the town's site and subdivision ordinances be observed when developing the individual subdivision and site plans? The answer to that question is yes. But again, the master plan PUD will be the de facto zoning ordinance for the properties. Okay? So, just for the record, if we could add that statement, please.
Okay, so that's correct in the minutes. Okay, motion by Mary, second by Lynn, to accept the minutes of March twenty-seventh as previously amended. Any discussion? Singed on, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Absentees, here is affirmative.
I'm standing because I wasn't there.
Okay, the record show John was not at the meeting, so. And I'll sign those, Lynn. And we have discussions with town staff.
I have nothing this evening.
You're all set?
Yep.
Anything, John?
Ditto.
You're all set. Okay, board.
Just wanted to say I was a few minutes late because I was stopped by the horde of turkeys that were crossing Gilchrist's flock.
Flock.
I was going to say murder, but I didn't want anybody to think there really was a murder.
Crows.
Those are crows, right?
Murder of crows.
Right.
Yeah, I just want to, for the board, is a Ready, Set, Go. This is from Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission. This is a workshop. It'll discuss the new and innovative Ready, Set, Go regional marketing and economic development tool for Southern New Hampshire Planning Region, as well as recent changes to state of New Hampshire's Economic Revitalization Tax Credit Program. They welcome anyone to attend. It's free, and you learn two important economic development programs that they will go cover. The complete Ready, Set, Go program, we found the new website, www.rede-set-go-new-hampshire, it's all one word, dot com. And this is being held Wednesday, week from today, April seventeenth, at the Public Service of New Hampshire Building, seven eighty North Commercial Street. So, this is up on a website, but I'll put this in the read file for anyone that is, oh yeah, I'll drop that in the read file. So if anyone's interested in going and feels they want you to do something with planning next Wednesday, probably would be something worthwhile to take in. That is all I have. So we'll proceed to our continued plans. This is Pillsbury Realty LLC, tax map ten, lots fifteen, twenty-three, twenty-nine C-dash-two-A, twenty-nine C-dash-two-B, forty-one, forty-one dash one, forty-two, one dash two, forty-two, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, fifty, fifty-two, fifty-four dash one, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, and sixty-two. This is an application acceptance at a public hearing for formal review of Woodmont Commons Plan Unit Development Master Plan. And this is continued from a meeting of March twenty-seventh, two thousand and thirteen. And we'll go to the applicant for presentation. The floor is yours, Ari.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Just for your record, I'm Ari Pollock with Gallagher, Callahan, and Gartrell. I'm legal counsel for the applicants. And representing the applicants tonight is Mike Kettenbach for Pillsbury Realty. Also behind me is our usual complement of team members. To my right is Jimmy D'Angelo with TEC. Jimmy is going to be providing an update on some of the infrastructure discussions that have been occurring with staff, as well as a response to the transportation update that was provided in February, specifically relating to the development in the no-build-for-four-A scenario. We are currently working under the extension of the review clock that was granted at the last meeting until May fifteenth. And well, that'll, that extension allowed this evening's meeting and also planning for a meeting on May eighth. I do anticipate a further extension coming at that time. This evening's topics, as I said, relate to infrastructure, transportation, and then running some site plan and subdivision examples through some of the emerging development standards that have been the subject of some meetings between our team and HSH and, of course, town staff. That leaves for May the much anticipated discussion on fiscal impact, as well as a full set of the, of the development standards, excuse me, and then any follow-up items that are relating to infrastructure and the development agreement, all of which are underway but not prepared for presentation this evening. Unless the board has process or scheduling questions, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Jimmy D'Angelo to my right, and then after him, Tom Goodwin from Shook Kelly to my left, to work through this evening's presentation, which tracks the briefing document that you received last week.
Okay. And what we'll do, we'll get the, you know, the presentation first, then I'll do questions. Questions will be from staff, the board, and then the public. And then after that, we'll have questions on questions, which we had discussed last meeting.
Yeah, and Cynthia, of course, is not able to be with us tonight. I know John is sitting in, but if Cynthia were here, she probably would say that the infrastructure update is nothing more than a quick overview of where the discussions have been headed. And so I'll share that on her behalf.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as Ari said, my name is Jim D'Angelo. We're TEC, and we've been working to coordinate the infrastructure and traffic submissions. And you have in your briefing document copies of some exhibits that were part of the infrastructure memorandum that were prepared and delivered to staff. And first of all, I want to thank staff and the peer review consultant for accommodating us on Monday to sit down and talk about that initial submission. But for tonight, what I would like to do is just put up those exhibits and give you a status report. The items that we have submitted for infrastructure are wastewater, water supply, stormwater management, and under the utilities, the private utilities, the electrical, natural gas, and communications. There are memorandum that accompany each of those, and there, as we talked about on Monday with staff, there are issues that we need to further explore in order to complete that submission, so that we can make both the final presentation and recommendation to the board in each of those areas. And if, Tom, if you give me the first slide, the sewer collection concept, again, our subconsultant to us, CMA, worked and prepared a, an extensive technical memorandum that looked at existing conditions, where the pump stations are, where we ultimately have to go to the dairy water sewage treatment plant. And in talking on Monday with staff, John particularly wanted to make sure that we got the existing condition accurate, so that it was not just a question of available capacity, but also the existing conditions of the distribution to get to that capacity and the limitations of it. So we went over each of those elements. John had an extensive and exhaustive comment page, which we discussed, and we should be resubmitting tomorrow, a, an update of that existing conditions analysis, so that we'd be prepared next week, or excuse me, next meeting, to conclude the, the water and sewer issues. The next slide is the water supply concept. And again, it shows what, where the private and public water supplies are. Penachuck Water would be providing water, and where would be the locations that we would have to hit with what capacity that exists there, and how it will be distributed. And again, there were some comments associated with that, and we'll be updating that memo so that it would be complete and acceptable, both to the town and to the peer review consultant, before we come back to you. And the last issue is the drainage areas, and I think that, well, this was pretty straightforward from our perspective of the topography that exists on that piece of property, high spots, low spots. And in the briefing document, the technical memorandum that accompanied submission, it talked about the intent of our design to use best practices and to use vegetated swales to bring, to collect the drainage and to treat it in those swales, to hold it and release it. And most of that was going to be released to our new water quality element, which was the pond. But in other areas, we use the same techniques before we detain it, infiltrate it along the way, treat it, infiltrate it, detain it, and not release it over the property line at any greater rate than what's being released now. And again, there's some, some additional work with that, but I think the biggest issue there is the issue of having to deal with the Beaver Brook salting impact. And although this is a private development, a private development, that we need to come and work cooperatively with the town so that we accommodate the intent of the saltation mitigation that has been planned both, not only for ninety-three, but also for the town roads. And we want to make sure that we're doing it in a, in a complimentary fashion to assist the town in bringing Beaver Brook back to where it's supposed to be. So those are the three components of infrastructure. And again, tomorrow, tomorrow is Thursday, right, Kevin, before the close of business, so that those memorandum will be, have been updated and submitted back to the town for there to be reviewed. And hopefully, we'll be able, at the next meeting, be able to resolve and finalize our submission package in each of those areas. The other element that we have on tap for tonight is the four-A, the traffic analysis, answering the question, what if there is no four-A? I mean, we did an exhaustive traffic impact study for, as was required, using the scenario of a full build. And there were questions, both from the town and from the peer review consultant, that asked for a sensitivity analysis, what if there was no four-A? We have completed that analysis and have sent it back to be, again, reviewed. And to summarize that, I have Kevin Dandrade from TEC, who will go through that quickly to get to the final slide. Thanks.
Thank you, Jimmy. For the record, Kevin Dandrade, principal and senior project manager with TEC. And as Jimmy stated, I'll give you the synopsis of the additional analysis that we did at the request of some of the board members and staff to look at the development potential until or without the exit four-A becoming available or being constructed. This was something that we had prepared and submitted to town staff and to HSH. They reported back, and they have a memorandum dated today, April tenth, that affirms the process that we went through. That's the great news, that a lot of the back and forth that we've done with staff and HSH has been very helpful in order to clarify assumptions, distribution of trips, shared trips between zones. And it's been a very good collaborative process to make sure that we have the answers that board members and public were looking for. Just to summarize the major steps that we went through, we had selected certain key intersections that were within the master plan traffic study that would be most likely affected. And we used the evening peak hour, because it was the one that during the master plan traffic study jumped out as the, becoming the critical peak hour over the morning period. We, again, test the situation without exit four-A, but still having the potential for some development in zone WC twelve, which is east of ninety-three. We also looked at, as part of our additional analysis, how much traffic under both scenarios would head up to the northern neighborhoods through Hardy and Hovey. With each of these cases, we've assumed that the major transportation mitigation would be in place, and that's important for the board to understand, so that we're dealing with really the only variable being four-A. The intersections that were studied as part of this update, and you can see, I'll try not to blind anybody, the intersection of Ash and the east side connector with Londonary Road, Londonary Road at Route one-oh-two, and Garden Lane at Route one-oh-two. Those were the key controlling intersections within the master plan traffic study that were the focus of this supplemental analysis. Again, the major assumptions is that there is no four-A as part of the test, and it was somewhat of an iterative process for us to back into how we end up with comparable results and what level of development we might have to scale down by to keep comparable intersection operations at those three key locations without exit four-A. As part of our analysis, we assume that there is no retail, hotel, or hospital within WC twelve. Some of that is somewhat commonsensible, because without a major connecting arterial road from exit four-A over to Folsom into twenty-eight, that pass-by traffic won't necessarily be there if there's no exit four-A. Now, there may be complimentary elements of retail, but for the purposes of our analysis and the other controlling documents that we're putting together now, we've assumed that the, the assumption is that there will be no retail, no hotel, or no hospital on that east side. With that, it limits the WC twelve to approximately four-hundred-thousand square feet of office space and three-hundred residential units. We maintain the same level of development in WC one through WC eleven, which is consistent with the master plan, the original traffic study. But with those characteristics of not having four-A, we had to redistribute traffic to the roadway system without having the benefit of that additional highway access. This is a summary table that shows what was just described in other text, to show that on the east side, up above, as part of the master plan, we have the controlling maximus there of three-hundred-and-fifty residential units, three-hundred hospital beds, two-hundred hotel rooms, four-hundred-thousand square feet of commercial office, and three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand of retail. As we go to the without-exit-four-A scenario, you can see that those have become dashes because we've removed that from the potential trip-making characteristics. This summary table of the level service on the right side is the most important part, and it documents what was originally in the traffic study from February under the full-build scenario, with the overall intersection operations with four-A. And with the scaled-down development without four-A, you can see that those results are more or less the same, or in some cases, slightly better. So what that hopefully does is, based on the reduction of the floor area or the number of hotel rooms or the hospital, it puts things at the same level playing field as if exit four-A existed and we had the full development. The other part of the analysis that we did was looking at the number of trips that might migrate to the north towards Route twenty-eight or exit five under both scenarios. This table shows the relative volumes that are based on a very detailed breakout of the trips, because when we do the analysis, we've separated out the residential from the office, from the other commercial retail trips. And those are all networks and traffic numbers that HSH and staff have reviewed. What we see is that on Hardy Road, we could have anywhere from thirty-eight to roughly seventy trips per hour in that AM and PM peak hour that might be introduced under either scenario. And those, again, were tried to balance so that the without-exit-four-A scenario was comparable. Hovey Road sees a lower traffic volume in that area. And the important thing to contemplate as we move from the stage we're in into the future and subsequent process of subdivision or site plan review, as we look towards that northern end of the site, that there are things that we can do that help guard against any potential increase in that flow for how we orient connections to Hovey Road in the case when we don't have exit four-A. And those are all things where we've assumed that there are direct connections, but the peace of mind for the board, hopefully, is that there are things that we can do as we move forward in the process that can bring the trips down to Pillsbury and then back up again, so it makes that route less convenient. So as a summary of trips in their entirety, what we did was we put together a suggested cap on trips by major region of the PUD. And this is based on the original master plan traffic study and our supplemental analysis. And this has, in particular, been reviewed by HSH to look at the sensibility of those numbers, so that no matter what the mix of development may be in the various WC zones and subareas, we can not exceed a certain cap of trips that are generated by those regions without having to seek approval from the board because of it potentially varying from the traffic study. So this is a way to, to guard against major variations in traffic in any particular area of the PUD. But you can see that on this chart, the without-four-A, by zones, essentially the major southwest, northwest, and northeast areas, we've put caps in both cases. Without four-A, obviously, on WC twelve, we have a significant reduction, roughly sixty-five to seventy percent, and that's because of the absence of that interchange. So the conclusions of this supplemental traffic analysis is that the development intensity remains the same in WC one through eleven. The potential for the major uses of retail, hotel, and hospital are limited in WC twelve because of its orientation within the PUD without exit four-A. Now, we would like to retain the opportunity to do elements of those uses as long as there's a comparable reduction in the trip-making characteristics for the office or the residential. But that's why those trip caps are important, because as long as we don't exceed that total per zone, we end up with the same anticipated traffic condition. That's really it, in a nutshell, as far as the update on traffic.
Yeah, okay, because I'm going to do questions, because we've got, overview of the infrastructure, and then we get the traffic. So we'll go to staff, and also our third party people. If there are any questions or comments on so far.
Just, just a update on, like Jimmy had said, his summary on the infrastructure status was pretty well, pretty close to being, that's where we're at. I call it, just, it's a work in progress right now. Additionally, the other thing that Jimmy had mentioned, again, regarding the drainage and the issue regarding the chlorides and the TMDL that's been set for Beaver Brook, again, just so that everyone understands, again, the town of Londonary has agreed to a salt reduction program with the state. And again, so what that, what that entails is, again, the town's agreed to attempt to reduce our salt usage within the Beaver Brook watershed area. This development is entirely within the Beaver Brook watershed area, and that reduction is really limited, our agreement is to the existing roadway, the existing public roadways out there. So that's what we're trying... So that's what we're trying to achieve. So as Jimmy indicated, there is a big hurdle to jump over here and figure this out. Also, part of this is our MS4 permit, it's an EPA permit, we are an MS4 community, we have a stormwater, and again, a big part of our new permit that's in draft form right now is, again, limiting our salt usage within that area. And again, how do we intend to address the chloride contamination or, again, with any future development out in that area? So Jimmy's hit it right on the head, it's something that really needs to be worked out and thought out and how we're going to deal with it.
And we see ourselves as coming up with a solution which is complementary to the town. You know, you've got so many miles of roadway, you've got so, you have certain practices that you use now, obviously we're going to modify those practices, and if we can assist in modifying those practices townwide, as well as deal with our roadway system, and maybe set up a model for other private roadways, then not only will Beaver Brook be better off, but the community will be better off, and we absolutely, you know, we can't do this by ourselves, so that's why even though groundwater, stormwater management component of this looks like it was done save for that component, we need to focus on that component before, and come up with an answer, a solution before we come back to you.
Absolutely.
The state's doing a lot of work with the widening of I-93 as far as sodium and chloride levels are getting into the, basically some of the, you know, like Beaver Brooks one, but there's another number of Brooks from Manchester South to Salem that are all involved also.
Correct. That's all I have for now.
Okay. Anything, John?
I'm okay.
Oh, okay. Jane, Ted, anything to add or?
You know, just to say on the traffic, we work pretty closely with Ted.
Could you move closer to the microphone, or bring the microphone over there?
Yep.
That's so people at home can hear.
Okay. We work pretty closely with Ted on the foray analysis and also on developing the trip caps, and we're satisfied that the caps that they have outlined here, they're rounded up, of course, they're not down to the last car, but they're consistent with the materials that were provided on trip generation, and they're consistent with the traffic networks that were used in the traffic analysis, both for the, with foray and without foray scenarios. I think the methodology has been sound. I think the one point that Kevin raised that's important is that either with or without foray, the levels of service that they talk about are dependent on implementation of that whole off-site mitigation program west of the highway and then along 102 going to 93 northbound, so it's important to keep that in mind in terms of looking at those trip caps. You're not going to achieve those levels of service unless that mitigation is carried out. The only other point about the foray analysis is that a good number of the trips were rerouted to the east, either down Pillsbury to Londonary Road or out Folsom Road to Route 1, Route 28 going up to exit 5, so that kind of gets some of those trips, particularly the Folsom Road ones out of Londonary's hair, but the folks in Dairy might have some comments about that particular aspect of the analysis, so.
And again, this was sensitivity analysis, full build from a planning perspective for the zone change. You know, we fully realize that when we come back, if we come back in reality for a specific use, it'll be a component of it, but this is the backdrop that we weigh it against. So the pieces of that mitigation that necessarily have to be in place will be weighed against what pieces of the full build development that we'll be putting forward.
Right, but this sets forth the big picture, the long-term maximum build-out, what would be necessary to accommodate what the board is being asked to approve, so.
Yeah.
The other kind of fine point that we discussed in terms of the maximum trip caps was that the distribution of entering trips and exiting trips in the peak hours is dependent on the mix of land uses, and it's hard to specify, you know, we talked about whether we should break down so many trips in and so many trips out of each of the zones as a maximum cap, but it's hard really to do that. I think the totals are appropriate because depending on how the land uses pan out, the fact that there are fewer trips in one direction might make it easier for more trips in the other direction to be accommodated, so.
Really going to have a balance there, and I think probably, if this does come to fruition, let's say, it has to be carefully monitored on what can expand, what can't expand.
That's right. And it's the beauty of mixed use really is that you get that balance between the inbound and the outbound, that it's not all office development where everybody comes in in the morning and leaves at night, or not all residential where everybody leaves in the morning and comes back at night, but you get some balance that helps, you know, better use the roadway capacity and the signal capacity.
And as we go forward in the process, there will be other traffic studies that will look at, you know, the subdivision level or the site plan level for major chunks of the project that will be able to go back and test against all the documentation that's been done to date.
I'll do the board, we'll just go through.
If you could go back to me.
Okay, yeah.
A couple of questions, I want to go back to the sewer and the water for a moment. From a capacity standpoint, have we looked at what that's going to do to the current infrastructure as far as capacities? What is current capacity today and what is capacity at full build-out?
I think at this time, John, again, we've had some initial discussions, you know, they did prepare a technical memorandum, we've given them some comment, and I don't, I think it's unfair for us, for them to, it's premature to respond to that right yet, just so that we can have all the correct numbers, it's just some inconsistencies in the numbers. We do have some concern about capacities and whatnot, so they're still working on that, John?
When do we expect to have that?
But that was the purpose of the exercise, you know, that's what, that's what our obligation is.
Correct.
Is this is what, at full build, what this mixed use is, this is what kind of, for instance sewer, this is what kind of sewer that we'll be generating, and these are the points that we're looking to, that we have to hit, and these are the capacity here at the plant, and how does it get there, and where's the cap now with the intermunicipal agreement, and what kinds of things that are going to be necessary in order to deliver it there.
Maybe I'm not, you know, maybe I'm not getting it across. You build something out, you're talking about what the current capacity is, what is the current capacity today, say, in the sewer system that we're going to be connecting this to?
That's what they're.
We don't know that number right now, is what you're telling me.
No, no.
The current, the current?
Yeah, we know, we know that number.
What is that number today?
Well, I don't have the memorandum, but I'm thinking it's like 329.
I think it's now 230 GP.
Yeah, 230, this is one number, then this is a top number.
230 what again?
230,000 gallons per day.
Per day, and what is it, that's what they're doing today, or is that full capacity?
No, that's what, that's what we've bought into the system, that's what Londonary has permitted to discharge the dairy.
So we as a town have bought that?
Correct.
Okay, so a couple of things, we as a town have bought that, and how much of that have we consumed?
I think we're only at 90,000 gallons a day.
90,000. And the facility itself, what is it rated for from a capacity standpoint?
Again, that's, those were some clarifications that we need to get clarified.
Okay.
So you're right, John, there is a point where we have to buy additional capacity, there's a point where Dairy will have to improve the wastewater treatment plant, do some upgrades, so those are all things that's.
I'm trying to understand that point, right, because if we take maximum numbers for everything that we've been talking about as far as maximum build-out, maximum roadways, maximum traffic, and all the maximums, obviously we need to look at maximum, you know, wastewater facilities' consumption, right, and what that's going to do as a burden for us as far as that's concerned, as well as what the facility is going to have for a burden at full capacity, so I would expect we would see these numbers.
Yeah, and you will see the numbers, and that's what we have done in initial assessment, and we're refining that assessment now, but we do have a myriad of numbers that will be presented to you in May that will document all of those capacity questions, but also the critical things that we need to do to upgrade the system to have that full build. Yes, there's some reserve capacity today, but what we're outlining currently in the revised memo is the other major actions that are going to be necessary to, with some thresholds essentially, that say, at this point, this would need to be upgraded, at this next point, this would be necessary for upgrades, but ultimately, there is capacity in the Dairy wastewater treatment plant, but we'll also be talking about the process for when those caps are for revising the IMA, the municipal agreement, and what is being used currently. So all those facts will be presented to you in May.
Yeah, and that's why, that's why I just wanted to bring up the exhibits, just to show you where we are as a starting point and understanding what we have to hit, but I think that on Monday, John added another dimension to it, which was it's not just...
I'm going to ask another question, I don't even know what you're trying to hit at this point. You've got some drawings on the map that show me what you're going to run for sewer based on roads that we haven't seen yet, on capacities that we know are maximums, I'm not even sure what you're trying to hit at this particular point, so I'm confused, I'm not a very smart guy, but I'm a little bit confused at what you're talking about trying to hit from thresholds, and we're going to get a myriad of numbers, I'm just trying to figure out capacities at this particular point for the project, and we don't even have those things.
Well, the thing, when I say what we have to hit, it's just like the water, there's a point where water is delivered now, so we have to extend that water down to us.
Do we have capacity, well, that's my next question, do we have capacity for water as well, because we don't know.
And, well, no, we do know, we do know.
Then what is it?
There is more than sufficient capacity for water to serve this development, it's how it gets there. There is capacity available to serve this development.
So from, how much capacity, all right, so it's here to serve this, again, I'm going to ask the same question, from the ability to supply water as well as sewer into this facility, right, what is the current capacity, what is the maximum capacity into the town at this particular rate at the current services that we have? That's the first thing I'd like to know. The second is, I'd like to know what the burden is of those services, and how much remain, how much overhead or headroom we're going to have once this is built out at full capacity, so that we can understand how that's going to impact the rest of the town that may be building around it, so we can have some idea of what it's going to cost us for growth.
Right, and if I could, if I could just ask you just to wait till we finish, so that we have a complete existing conditions, so that we can lay that on top.
And that's fine, I'm asking for these things because I don't see it here and understand this is what I'm after.
If I could just make you feel comfortable, that's the purpose of the exercise, and those answers will be in the technical memorandum.
Okay. Next question that I have, if you could go back to the numbers that were on the board, go back a couple of slides, please. Forward again, I'm sorry.
Forward.
Where did I go?
I'll be in Hardy trips.
Yeah, stop here, I'll start with this for a second, the question that I have, so you have, firstly, why did you not take into consideration Gilcrest in this?
Gilcrest feeds into Hardy, obviously, but what I understood, the concern was previously was the number of trips that feeds to the north along Hardy and Hovey, so.
People cutting through those two roads.
But Gilcrest will still be part of that, would you disagree?
Absolutely, yeah, and Gilcrest will see significantly more traffic than those.
I would love to see the Gilcrest numbers as well for no foray, as well as foray.
They do have that, they have complete networks for all of the study area intersections with and without foray, but this table was put together at our request because it had come up at the planning board, a neighbor had raised the concern about Hovey Road and Hardy Road, so I asked them to pull that out specifically to respond to the request.
Right, and I appreciate that, and I know that's the case, but I think Gilcrest is also a major component of this study.
And it is, it is.
It'd be good to see the comparison there. The next question that I have about these numbers, so, let's see, through trip, right, 38 to 69 per hour?
Correct.
And what is the, what is the period for hours? So is it over a 24-hour basis, or is it over peak time basis, six-hour, two-hour?
This is a peak assessment, so this is, to put it in perspective, Hardy Road has roughly, or just over 300 vehicles per hour, and the AM and PM peak are fairly equal as you go north of the project site, so the 69 trips, say, in the evening peak hour would be on top of that 300 per hour that already exists today.
So this is on top of 300?
Correct.
So these are our total numbers?
No, no, this is, this is just the new PUD-generated trips, so.
This is additional.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, it'd probably be best to see that as total trips as well, as.
Well, I think if you're going to do that, though, it should be current and then additional, so that we have the understanding.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
That you're not adding 365, I don't want anybody to have that impression.
Correct, yeah, and really, it's a twofold answer that we need to give, one is a percent increase, but that's not necessarily a reflection of capacity, because some of those roads have capacity for more traffic, it's really the qualitative aspect of traffic that we're talking about, the number of new trips that passes by anybody.
You have qualitative and quantitative, but you also then have the reality of what traffic does on these roads regardless of what, in a statistical model, how the road is going to work, right?
Correct.
So today, I think looking at what the totals are, right, and then you can show us what we think the capacity is, because we've asked about capacity in the past, as a percentage of what you think it is, and then the increased trips, which I think Mary is right, we should show those, but also as a percentage of the increase of those trips and of the total capacity.
It's very easy for us to put together, just as a sum of what it would exist in the future without the project, what the project adds, and the total.
Yeah, because I did, I struggled with this chart, with what am I trying to get out of this, and what does it mean to me?
We need to relate it with other numbers also.
So can you roll to the next, yes, this one, so explain this one to me, so through the area, you have without foray is 3,450, and then with exit foray, you have 5150, which is an interesting number. If I take that, how do I equate that, is that per hour, this is, or per day, right?
No, this, the top describes.
Peak hour over the weekday.
No, this is the peak hour of the weekday evening, so save 5:00 to 6:00 p.m.
So 5,000 trips in peak hour?
That's correct, over all the different roads.
Everywhere.
All the different driveways that leave any particular subarea of the site, the PUD.
Okay, so, and again, what is peak hour, between what hours?
The weekday evening peak hour could be 4:30 to 5:30, 5:00 to 6:00, you know, the roads in this area during the typical commuter hour.
Which is?
Is right in that area.
Okay.
It's for a one-hour period as a snapshot of what the PUD would generate.
Okay, so during peak hour, 5,000 more trips would be generated with exit foray, and without foray, it'd be 3,400?
Correct.
That's the cap that we're suggesting, that it can't be any more than that without foray.
Okay. Okay, so, okay, that's helpful with what that really means. One other question that I have that I caught on to, you had made a statement about industrial versus non-industrial, and I just found your comment interesting, and you don't have to comment on it, but you said, you know, with industry, people come in to go to work, and then they leave to get out of work, and I think that the premise of how this thing is being sold to us at this particular point is that those people would be working and living in this community, and it sounded to me like that's not what you said, because that would only generate trips, that would only generate trips within the community of Woodmont-Ardids. Sounds to me that that's something different. different than what you said.
Well, I was talking in general about a commercial land use, like office versus residential. In this, for this development, they did assume a certain number of the trips, a small percentage of the trips, I think it was twelve percent is what we ended up agreeing on, would be internal to the PUD zones, to those six hundred acres, but they did route, this gets very specific, but they did route trips that would be going, say, from the west to the east, across Pillsbury Road, for example, or across 102, so they do show up on the public roads, but they did not assume that everybody who lives in the development would work in the same place, or that everybody who worked there would live there.
And it also takes into consideration hospital and hotel trips with 4A and without 4A?
Yes, although there's no hospital with, no hospital or hotel, no hospital at all and no hotel on the east side without 4A.
Okay, thank you.
Mary?
I was just disappointed that this slide wasn't in our update. Maybe you just got this, or you just generated this?
Wasn't in your package?
It was really a summary for the purposes of the presentation tonight. It's certainly available. I mean, it was just really a very generalized breakout of all these trips, but we do have a summary of those trip caps within the briefing documents, just not exactly in that table form, so we're happy to provide.
Those numbers aren't there, though. I didn't read those numbers anywhere in the briefing document. Did I miss them?
The numbers are in Table Two in the document that they put out March twenty-seventh, and then they revised it today.
Yeah.
It's in Table Two.
We're happy to provide that so the board has, everybody has a copy of...
Yeah, you have a Table Two, and you have a Table One, but I don't think those numbers are here.
Yeah, because Table One...
Those aren't the total. I was just looking for the total.
Not in this general briefing document, but in the tech memo that they prepared.
Oh, probably.
They had the detailed spreadsheets that provide the basis for those caps, and I did go over that really carefully to be sure that we could trace those numbers back to the trip generation and then to the traffic numbers.
Yeah, within the final version, that can be implemented as well.
This will be in the final version.
Yeah, so that is a very clear and concise summary of those caps, and that's...
Thank you.
Can easily be provided.
Thank you.
There is one point about the caps that is of note for the planning board that you need to look at carefully, is that they did suggest a fifteen percent variance from the caps, and I think where the traffic numbers have been based, either with or without 4A, on a certain development program and a certain mitigation package, if you think about increasing the overall numbers by fifteen percent, that would require more mitigation. So I think it's, you know, you definitely have to consider the request to have a variance in these numbers, but it's important to know that if you do allow them to be raised, that more mitigation would be required.
Okay, so we're going to look at it like plus fifteen percent and minus fifteen percent, and the effects there, and then the effects from the average.
It's really between zones, just to clarify for the board that...
Right, that's what I would imagine.
Fifteen percent variance in the three major areas of the PUD, without a fifteen percent variance overall. So it allows for some flexibility within the zones while not creating a starkly different traffic situation overall.
And that may still require some mitigation because of the type of development that you're doing in those particular areas, but as far as the total is concerned, the cap is the cap. The fifteen percent variance would be within that cap.
Exactly.
With that said, though, the difference between the east and the west, the cap of trips in zones one through eleven is pretty much the cap that needs to be respected, so that while there might be some flexibility, like they mentioned, the northwest zone has some extra capacity, so you might put a few more trips up there, but that garden lane intersection is kind of a choke point, so, you know, the flexibility even within the zones, I think, is constrained by some of those key capacity choke points, which I think these guys understand.
There's no debate on that from us. It's really, we agree.
I wouldn't imagine that you would want to develop something that's going to be difficult for people to get in and out of.
Correct.
So I'm not concerned. Thank you.
Okay, Lynn?
So, question on stormwater discharge again. So how does, you know, salt discharge and overall just stormwater discharge into Beaver Brook get measured, you know, quantitatively measured today?
Again, with DOT, actually, through the Department of Environmental Services, Lynn, they had done a study of Beaver Brook, and they had looked at chlorides, and that's how they came up with a TMDL, a Total Maximum Daily Loading, on Beaver Brook. So again, I'm not a environmental scientist, so as far as, you know, they take the sample and they determine what the impact it is to the aquatic life, and they look at that. That's how they determine these TMDLs. So that's kind of the engineer in me telling you how they did that stuff.
So the impact of the project is measured by the amount of roads or square feet of road surface times the amount of salt that we typically put down on a square foot of road?
Right now, that is the, you know, calcium chloride is the means of, or chloride is the means of winter maintenance. That's how we all do it.
But that's how the rates typically measure, though, is just something like that, just based on the miles of road being added...
Correct, yeah.
Times the amount of salt we typically add.
Three hundred pounds a mile, yeah, lane mile, yeah. So when we went through our calculation for the existing roadways, we know what the rate of salt that our trucks discharge, and so that's how we were able to come up with what number we presently use within the watershed, and then again, in order for Town of London area, we have a proportion of the drainage area for Beaver Brook, so we extrapolated it back, saying, okay, well, we need to reduce it by X amount. So again, right now, though, that number is only based on the miles of existing public road within that watershed.
Is there a way that the actual amount of stormwater discharged into the Brook gets measured as well, you know, before and after?
We don't do that. Again, the requirement typically is, again, just no increase in the rate of runoff.
But if we don't know really the starting point, you know, it's kind of hard to measure the ending point as well. So I was just kind of curious, because Beaver Brook has flooding problems downstream from this.
Well, again, but they do have, USGS had a gauging station down at Kenner Pond Dam that they had installed, and had done some recording of what the flow in the Brook was. I don't know what those numbers are, though, off the top of my head.
Okay, would that be kind of measuring it after the fact, though, after...
Yeah, but again, though, that's just the rate. That's not the, you know, again, the study for the TMDL, I don't, I think there was five sampling locations within the stretch of Beaver Brook that they had done that sampling.
And I don't think there's any intention that the project would be held to a lower standard than what the town does elsewhere. As John described, you know, there's a requirement to not increase the peak flows off the perimeter of the property, just like any other project that the board would see. It's really about how we do that, combination of biofiltration areas or infiltration detention areas that will be identified, not now, but at the site plan stage, and really, the purpose of this process here would be to set the guiding principles that would be consistent and also complement what the town needs to do as the requirement, and what can be the principles and guidelines for the PUD for how the users within the PUD will go about controlling salt usage in that cooperative effort to reduce that towards Beaver Brook.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, it's a two-pronged effort, though, salt and just the total volume of stormwater as well. And then the other question I had goes back to the dairy. I'll use the Dairy Wastewater Treatment Plan as the example. If there are improvements needed to that, is it typically the users of that system that pay for the improvements, or is it the, is it spread over the towns, all the towns' taxpayers?
Again, that's up for discussion. That's yet up for discussion, Lynn. We need to determine what those impacts will be, and again, we'll have to work with the intermunicipal agreement and...
Because today, I thought there was like the sewer, you know, we have the municipal sewer agreement, and I thought all the users have paid for the total cost of maintenance and operation for the sewer system.
Your user, your user fees.
Right, right.
Your access fees actually pay for capital improvements and for pass buying into the system. That's how I always explain it to people. You're buying into a system that the town's already paid for.
Right, right, but I would expect if there's any improvements needed, you know, to, let's say, to the treatment plan again, if there's any improvements needed because of the added capacity that was being placed on it, the needs for capacity, that the users would once again be, or the people paying for it and not, you know, through user fees.
Right, but again...
As opposed to the town, you know, the rest of the, all of us on septic systems, we wouldn't be putting the bill forward.
You're absolutely right, yeah, yeah.
Okay, then, just another general question. We had Section Four in the book, and we haven't had any discussion on that. Are we going to have a discussion on that tonight as well?
What's Section Four, Lynn?
That's the subdivision.
Coming next.
Oh, that's coming. I think we're just dealing right now with the infrastructure and the roads.
That's fine.
I don't want to cover too wide an area, because I don't want to keep us focused somewhat, so.
I missed that. I'm all set.
Okay, Laura?
No questions right now.
Okay.
My only comment was, when you first started talking about the salt on the roads, you talked about working out a process where, together, the town and the developer would have to work out a process, and the salt numbers, and, I don't know, that kind of raises red flags in my head. Should I be worried that, you know, that the salt number can only be X, and if it can't go above X, then it has to be smoothed out in other places, and therefore less salt is used in other places? Is that a fair assumption?
Right now, it's in the Beaver Brook watershed, so that's our main concentration.
And how much larger is the Beaver Brook watershed around this development?
I'm sorry?
How much larger, like, where does it encompass, who else does it encompass beyond this development?
Town of Dairy. Dairy has some, again, getting back to your question, though, again, like I said, we have a salt reduction plan to address our existing roadways, our existing public roadways, so that's what we're trying to achieve. So to say, what are they going to do, that's, the burden is on them in my mind, because we're trying to achieve, we're trying to achieve, I'm just going to use some numbers, we're at two-fifty, we're trying to achieve two-hundred. So obviously, if they can add additional roads, how are we going to get there?
But is, would that something, would that be something that would be discussed in this forum at any given point, or would that be something that would be discussed in another forum?
I think it should be discussed in this forum, because it's an environmental issue.
When projects come up individually and the effective rate?
I think it should also be addressed at this stage of the game, too.
No, I just want to understand how that process works, because I start to get nervous about that.
You know, my only comment on that would be, and I've been leaving the technical discussion to the technicians, but this is a problem that any developer or applicant in town faces, and, you know, the goal for us is to reach some sort of a negotiated conceptual approach, so that when we get into the site plan and subdivision phases, we have some backdrop of concept to rely on, so that we don't just hit a rock wall then for being able to predict it now. The idea is to have some alternatives in mind, some ways that maybe the town can work with us to better budget for salt use, so that there is capacity available, not just for this project, but for other projects, so that the alternatives are studied and explored and known, so that when an applicant comes in, makes an application, whether it's within the PUD or elsewhere, they're not just turned away because they don't have capacity for maintaining roadways with chloride products. And there are alternatives out there, and I'm no expert on them, but I know they exist.
No, and alternatively, we want to understand those things as we head into this as well. So as long as I can understand that that will be addressed...
Well, we technical people are dying to provide alternatives that would assist in reducing this issue, and traditionally, not to digress, but traditionally, what happens is that when you salt a road, you know, you've got the back of the truck and...
Could you pull the microphone a little closer to you, please?
So when, you know, traditionally, you sand and salt a road between certain temperatures, right, so you know, below it, it's no good, and above it, it's not needed. And the traditional way of doing it, you just load up your spreader and off you go, and sometimes, they're not calibrated to the speed of the truck, and so you're dumping more than you need in certain areas. So that's the first thing, is make sure that it's calibrated. Secondly, a lot of that stuff hits the road and bounces, right, and ends up on the side of the road, and here, we're trying to treat this road. So there's ways of treating this road without doing it in the traditional fashion. So when I say we have to work together, we have to understand, it's not just about, oh, we used to throw three hundred pounds down per lane, now we're only going to throw two-fifty. Hmm, but maybe we can throw two-hundred and use two-hundred in a better way. Maybe we can help you figure out a way to do that, and maybe that may take a different kind of truck or a different kind of calibration. And if we participate in that, then we would like to get at least two attaboys on the back of the road. So, and so that's the kind of discussion.
You guys going to buy the trucks?
Well, I don't know. That's why this is not resolved yet. That's the kind of discussion that would take in place. We'd like to come to you, oh, we've worked this out, we've got an idea, we've got a solution that seems like it makes sense, but we are not there yet.
Yeah, because even the state is doing a lot of experimenting with I-93, because they have to mitigate both the sodium and the chloride levels, which come from other salts also, and as a result, they have a mitigation program that allows them to pave a total of six lanes and widening, not the eight lanes, because they don't have a program there yet. So there's not going to be the full width of I-93 because of the mitigation that is going on. So, I mean, the state's got a problem, we've got a problem, and then you get people complaining about slippery roads in the wintertime, so.
Yeah, I just want to be reassured that when the power goes out, I can get to the local coffee shop. You're going to always get to the local coffee shop. Are you kidding?
That's one of the mitigation generators for everyone.
Well, you know what, Letha, I attend a salt reduction meeting monthly or quarterly with DOT and, you know, DES and all the communities around, and that's the biggest thing that, you know, we've talked about all these methods, and, but the biggest thing is, is people need to learn how to drive, need to relearn how to drive, either, you know, pick up your cup of coffee and your bread on your way home, because you know tomorrow is going to...
This is getting beyond planning, Lynn.
There we go.
I'll stop now. I'll get off my horse. I'll get off my horse.
Hey, if they're open, I'm going.
Hey, we're in London Dairy. There is a dunks on every corner. You don't have to worry about it. You can get there.
I can't brew, I'm going.
Okay, anything else? Gabriel?
Yeah.
No, I really don't have anything, but it just, it sounds like there's a, the whole state, it sounds like there's like new state rules and laws about this whole salting. That's what you were saying before?
Yep.
So you're dealing with state rules and regulations as well as just this development that we're talking about?
Correct.
Okay. No, I'm good otherwise.
Yeah.
Yeah, just one question. I notice in your biofiltration, you use plants and microbes. Is that similar to wetlands replication? Do you use wetlands plants?
Yes.
And do you introduce microbes, or are they naturally occurring?
I wish Jeff Wilson was here, because he's got a write-up that talks about, he's picking the kinds of plants that he wants on the swale. So he's down to the size and kind of plants, and talking about where are we going to go get those plants to make sure that they're mature enough to be planted in the swale when we're building the swales.
Okay, I was kind of curious about that.
Okay, Tom?
Oh, thanks. If you could go back to the last chart you had up there, and what, yeah, that's, yeah. So you saying the base right now, for example, at Hardy Road is approximately three hundred?
Correct. Where Hardy meets Hovey, the through traffic on Hardy Road is approximately three hundred or just over three hundred per hour.
And the thirty-eight to sixty-nine, again, reflects morning and night, or?
Exactly, yeah. Up above, it says without, exit 4A, and in parentheses, AM and PM, so the numbers below, the first one's AM, the second one's PM.
Okay, so you're suggesting that sixty-nine trips, additional trips without exit 4A... Okay, so you're suggesting that 69 trips without, additional trips without exit 4A, that the current roadway has a capacity to sustain approximately a 33% increase in traffic?
It has capacity to handle significantly more than that. Really, the purpose of this was to give some input and some information to the board and to the public about the new trips that could be anticipated from the PUD that would go up through those neighborhoods. So it would be unrealistic to assume that somebody wouldn't want to go to Giovanni's to get a pizza or to go to a business up on 28 or to access exit 5 simply because they want to take the local road system rather than an interstate highway. So that factors in for some of that distribution that is naturally going to occur from any development in this area that would migrate to the north. So again, when you see the numbers are very consistent between the left and the right side columns, it's because we've pared down the development until such time as exit 4A is implemented.
You've, you know where that exit is? You've ever been there at 5 o'clock at night, then at the section?
Oh, yeah, I've been through all these intersections at.
No, at 5 o'clock, you know, 6 o'clock?
Yes.
And you think a one-third increase in traffic is just a minor event?
At Hardy and Hovey?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there is capacity to do it. And we've already tested the capacity analysis within the original study from February to show that there's still good levels of service overall. Obviously, there's no difference in traffic control. You'd still have the stop sign on the side street. And although delays would increase over what they are today, they're not at a point that suggests any other change in traffic control to try to mitigate those impacts.
Okay, but you agree that there'll be an increase in delay, right?
Correct. I can't say there will not be, but what is anticipated for the extra volume to go up in that direction? And keep in mind, too, that as we add traffic, say on Hovey Road, as it would go north towards Hardy and comes to the stop sign, there is a balancing point, too, where with the other capacity improvements that we'll be making in and around the PUD, whether it's on 102 or Lunedary Road, that it becomes that much more attractive. If you're trying to go to the north to go across the Ash Street Bridge, take a right onto Lunedary Road at the southerly end, we're planning on a new signal down there with additional lane capacity, taking a right and then slippery onto the northbound on-ramp. So there are these other mitigation improvements that we've conceptualized to date. That's why we've said that they are important under both the with and without exit 4A assessment because we still want to make it as efficient as possible to get to exit 4 and exit 4A once it's implemented.
But isn't, isn't there an effect by increasing the delay by a third or traffic by a third? Isn't there an effect on, on not only the people involved in the traffic, but the abudders who have to now put up with this for an extra one-third of the amount of time?
Well, the, and that's why I say it's not necessarily about traffic capacity. It's about the perception of additional vehicles going by. That, that impact that we can't quantify, but says any traffic, no matter where development occurs in Lunedary, there will be traffic volumes that distribute to other roadways that don't warrant mitigation or there's no necessary change in traffic control.
You said, excuse me, you said it doesn't warrant mitigation? Is that the phrase?
That's correct. At that intersection at Hardy and Hovey, in our professional opinion, and this has been reviewed by staff and by your peer review consultant, the level of increase would not warrant any change in traffic control at that intersection.
And what's the criteria for that? That you believe or staff believes that it doesn't warrant mitigation?
It's one car a minute. It's one additional car a minute on a two-lane roadway that has, you know, you say it's a significant capacity. It has sufficient capacity to handle it. And yeah, there are delays at stop conditions. But again, when, this is, this is again, from the planning perspective at the beginning. When we come in for a specific development, and that's why Kevin, the last part of his slide was, that now if this Hardy and Hovey are of significant concern to the abudders, then there are things that we can do as we lay, as we put our development in on that north side so that it, you know, implement traffic calming measures, make it circuitous. So it's not an easy way. So, but we had to present a worst-case scenario because if we tried to present something that was rosier than that, our peer consultants would say, excuse me, you're presenting too rosy a condition here. Just like the, you know, the comment about.
If you could give me an example of something that would mitigate that? Some sort of traffic pattern altering?
Don't make a direct connection to it because we're coming from our development. So we lay out the street system. And so if you have to, you know, instead of going straight up, we make you go left, make you go right, left and back up again. You have to make a hook. It makes it more attractive to go somewhere.
Let me give you, my, well, just hold on a second. Let me, let me give you my perception. Right now, people have to abide by or tolerate what's there now. You're putting in a development. My view is that as a taxpayer or an owner of the land, nothing should change for them. So you can have your development there, but don't impose any burden, and I mean any burden, on anybody else. Either money, taxes, or.
Not one more car?
Yeah.
How is it possible? How is it possible to develop anything there?
Excuse me, you're the one that's putting in the development, okay? And this isn't, you know, 20 houses. This is 1,600 potential projects. So again, my question is this. Is there something you can do to make it so it's like it is now? That the delay is there?
We don't make a connection.
What?
Then, we don't make a connection, but then.
I don't understand what that means.
We don't hit, we don't make a through road coming through, from our property to Hovey Road, right? And if we do that, then we still develop.
It's feasible to do something. You guys have determined that, you know, it doesn't warrant it, but it is feasible to do it.
What I can tell you is it is not feasible to assume that there will not be one increase in trips. Traffic has connectivity to Hardy Road, to Hovey Road in the future. No matter how they get there from any particular project, it's really about the reasonableness of what we consider level service that may get to a tripping point someday, whether it's.
Well, reasonable this actually depends on where you're looking from.
Absolutely.
It might be unreasonable for me if I'm on the corner over there to put up with additional cars that could be mitigated by you doing something with a traffic pattern. Would you agree with that?
Okay, so we cut that off. If we're still going to develop something, those trips are going to come down to the, to the front door instead of the back door. So we're going by somebody else's front door. So if you're applying that criteria, everybody has to be treated exactly the same. Our trips just have to stay within, which is what we're trying to do with this mixed-use development. And again, you know, we used a, a.
Well, as you said, you're the technical guy. Yeah, I'm not the technical guy. I'm just telling you what my philosophy is.
I hear you, I hear you clearly.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. If we can go to the, actually, John, maybe you have the answer. You indicated on water, the town purchases 200, I think you said 8,000? We purchased from Dairy?
No, no, yeah, the wastewater.
Yes.
What we have for discharges, yeah. Don't quote me on those numbers though. But again, anyways, yeah, we have a municipal, intermunicipal agreement with Dairy that we can discharge X amount of flow, so whatever that number is.
And you said we currently discharge about 90,000?
There was, yeah, my recollection.
Okay. Now, does it, is it a uniform cost? I mean, if I discharge 180,000, it's ratably the same? Or does it increase as we get closer to the capacity level?
Right now, again, it's a.
It's a flat rate?
It's a flat rate, yeah.
Okay. And the only thing that prevents that flat rate from being a flat rate is our intermunicipal agreement?
Pretty much, yeah.
Which I presume Dairy could change?
Yeah. Although it is, it is good for X amount of years and I don't quite know what that timeframe is on. So they can't do it just willy-nilly.
And do we have any idea what the Woodmont development will push towards the maximum?
In their technical, in their technical memorandum, they have run those numbers. But again, there was some concerns with the numbers that they did run. So they need to go back to the, that's why it's a work in progress.
If I can go back to the analysis assumptions you used in the trips? Let me start with.
There's a word there.
Trip, it says in your briefing, it says trip distributions, 50% of trips, and this is on WC-12, to and from I-93 North that anticipate, are anticipated to access the PUD area via exit 4. Okay? And if we go down to WC 7 through 11, they indicate it's going to be 75%. And if we look at WC 1 through WC 6, it's 90% are heading to exit 4.
What, what page are you looking at?
Page 14. 13 and 14, yeah.
Yes, okay.
So I guess my question is, what kind of additional volume are we placing on exit 4? And have you quantified any kind of delay that that's going to cause?
We have, and that was quantified within the original study from February 6th that documents in great detail the levels of service at each of those intersections, including the two off-ramps from exit 4. With the work that NHDOT is going to be implementing soon for those interchange improvements, we still have acceptable level of service based on the state's criteria within their roadway there for what that would be in our 2032 horizon year. And that's, that's both with and without exit 4A.
Okay. Now, when you say it's in an acceptable level here, what does that mean for the person, the commuter who goes on to exit 4 now? How much of an additional burden is he going to have to bear?
Well, what you're going to see very soon is that once DOT widens the bridge structure over 93 at exit 4, the biggest, most obvious change is going to be that going eastbound on Route 102, there will soon be a double left-turn lane that would go on to the northbound on-ramp instead of the singular lane that soaks up a lot of time and a lot of capacity and backs up for a great distance because it's in that singular lane. The through capacity on 102 in that area, two through lanes in each direction, is plenty to accommodate that future growth across the bridge. The critical movements at that interchange are the turning movements. And that's what DOT is implementing. But what we've done is a test and we've provided DOT with copies of the studies that we've completed through February 6th, the full development scheme, to show that there are still level service D or better at each of the movements at that interchange.
What's level D?
It's essentially a measure of delay that, the average delay on any particular movement, that would be roughly a minute or less of waiting at any particular signal.
Do you have an idea of how much this is going to increase by percentage? What's currently there now? When you say 90%, for example, are going to use exit 4A and 50% and 75%? Do you have a quantity?
Yes, all those were in the more expansive technical memorandum that we've supplied to staff and to the peer review consultant. Very large document that was submitted originally.
Okay.
That quantifies between the no-build condition, you know, the case of general background growth without the PUD. Once we implement the PUD, so you can see how bad it would be without any mitigation at all. And then the condition where we mitigate traffic so that we can bring it back to be close to the condition without the development in place. So it's a measuring tool that we have, very expansive charts that show the comparative analysis of those various scenarios.
Is it fair to say that you're not doing any mitigation around exit 4 because that's a state road and they're going to do, they already have plans to do something?
That is correct, that there is a major transportation improvement project that is I-93 that is planned regionally to accommodate growth. So that is, that is a fair statement. This is a process of, as we've explained in prior briefing sessions, that this is the local process that we're going through at the zoning level with the PUD to understand what we have the right to come back to, hopefully, to propose something specific. But above and beyond the town, we also have the state process with DOT and with NHDES and others that also regulate all the different factors that we're talking about, whether it's traffic and stormwater and others. That is an additional level of review and control at a state level that are going to shape what we do specifically to accommodate traffic with any particular phase.
Do you know if any of the plans the state is using to modify exit 4 anticipated or took into account the Woodmont development and the additional traffic flow that is coming off of Woodmont?
Specifically, no. But that's why we do this analysis, so they can see it.
Okay, so they're still in the process of developing plans to?
Oh, no, they have their plans. They're advancing it. Recently, the commissioner engaged a consultant to advance all the final design plans that stem off a preliminary process of design to finish all those things that have been set in motion.
Okay.
They have a very specific timetable and John's received some of the documentation that talks about the phasing from the DOT's I-93 project manager that outline all those steps and things that are on a specific horizon by funding year, elements ranging from exit 3 all the way up to the completion of 293.
So these plans were done many years ago?
It predates Woodmont.
Predates Woodmont. So the effect Woodmont might have on exit 4 was not specifically taken into account on whatever they're going to do?
No. Yeah, the regional models that were used, whether it's Southern New Hampshire, the consultant teams working for DOT all those years ago during the environmental impact statement process, those things, those processes, those analyses, all considered growth with that model that contemplates land use. Did it document specifically what we're proposing at this stage? Probably not. But it's, that's the reason why we do supplemental analyses. And it's the same reason why we'll be back in front of the planning board with other traffic studies at each phase so that we can show how are we measuring up against what we projected in February of 2013? And how do we test against that? And what specific mitigation is necessary for those phases when they come up?
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, the state always projects ahead. And, you know, looking back, the 70s, 80s, even probably like the early 90s, the growth, especially Southern New Hampshire exceeded what the state was projecting. So that's why the big building programs.
Right, they could have projected it 5% or 10%, and now because of this, they're going to get 20%. That's, you know, that's my concern.
Yeah, that's.
Anecdotally, there are a number of varies that I've actually seen negative growth over the past five years, as you can imagine with the recession. So when we look at transportation models, we try to be conservative and yet still show something either between half a percent and a percent for the purposes of what we've talked about with staff and HSH. Thanks.
Anyone from the public have any questions or comments in regards to the water that we just have been presented? The sewer and drainage and then the traffic as we had just discussed? Oh, yeah, okay, Jack. Didn't look like you were, you got your hand up there fully. Come down to the microphone and name an address, please.
Jack Falvey, 22 Cortland. I'm having trouble with the numbers. It looks as if that Woodmont wants to develop 1,450 dwellings. And it seems that if you look at the kinds of dwellings they intend to develop, it might resemble something along the lines of what Century Village is, as far as the kinds are concerned. Those are some of the. as far as the kinds are concerned, those are some of them. So a walk-through Century Village shows you that there's roughly two cars per dwelling. Pretty consistent. So if you look at 1,450 dwellings, and you bring that up times two, you're talking almost 3,000 automobiles inside this 600-acre spot.
You're assuming everyone has an automobile there. Am I correct?
I'm saying if you, if you go to a similar development inside Lunen Derry, and you walk through Century Village, and you count the number of cars and you count the number of units, it comes to, on average, two per unit in Lunen Derry. So you can't live in a, in a development like Century Village, which is very walkable, without an automobile. So roughly, we're talking, give or take, a few hundred cars. Somewhere around 3,000 vehicles in this 600-acre area. And people tend to drive the vehicles almost every day. So I see 3,000 vehicles in 600 acres, maybe going in and out once a day. And I see the increased numbers of trips being 36 here at this intersection, 62 at this intersection. So I'm not quite sure, and I realize this comes down to trips and it's all very technical. But just from a layman's point of view, if you're putting 2,800 or 3,000 automobiles inside 600 acres, you're going to park them there every night. People are going to drive them. And all of a sudden, you're looking at the impacts of an extra 30 seconds to get in and out of peak hours. I don't see the numbers lining up, so perhaps the traffic people can tell us. Why is it there's thousands and thousands of cars that are not there now, that are going to be there at full buildout? And the impact on the town will be a few minutes, a few seconds here, a few seconds there, whatever. So it's a comment, and I think if the traffic people have the technical expertise, maybe they could reconcile those numbers for us.
Right, so your numbers, their numbers, see how they relate?
Correct.
Okay. He's doing some ciphering here, but whether we have it right away, I don't know. Can you help us, please?
Yes, through the chair. Although there may be two cars per unit, Mr. Falvey's observations assume that everybody leaves their house at the same time. So although there may be two cars per unit, in some cases, we don't anticipate it to be that high in a mixed-use development such as what we're proposing. The tradition, all the numbers that we've put together are based on very sound, nationally-recognized data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers for a wealth of data in each of the residential categories, whether it be single-family homes, apartments and condos. And on average, when you look at the average rates of what it generates, it's roughly about one trip per unit for a single-family home. And somewhere around .6 unit, trips per unit for a condo. And that's just in very broad terms, so it's not a direct correlation of cars because the residents that live there could leave at various times of the day.
So like, one, one trip is one car? Is that?
Not necessarily. Per unit, like a single-family home would normally be one trip generated in a morning peak hour, the commuter hour, and one in the evening peak hour. Condos and apartments are less. So it's, it's not a correlation to the number of cars directly. For everybody that's bombing the street at the same time, it's not that bad. It's, it's based on, and Jane can confirm.
Right, I think that, you know, part of the issue might be the difference between daily trips and peak hour trips. The numbers that we were talking about were the PM peak hour only. And if you count up the residential units and the office and the hotel and the hospital and look at daily vehicle trips, the projection is more like 40,000 to 50,000 vehicle trips per day for the whole 650 acres. But the trips are distributed over time. There's only so many in the peak hour that we base the estimates on counts. And then they're going on all different routes and all different directions so that the proportion of trips, say on Hovey Road, is a very small proportion of those peak hour trips. So, you know, traffic is moving through time and space, so it does disperse and the impacts disperse.
Was it the formulas, equations and everything that explain all of this? How is, you know, spread through the whole area?
Correct.
It's all in the, it's all in the study. And, you know, it's, it's pretty excruciating detail, which I think is why they've got, lucky me to decipher all of it, that I've been carefully going through it and, you know, really trying hard to be certain that the impacts that they looked at were accurate based on that land use program, which is the important thing, I think, to keep in mind, that those maximum trips reflect that same batch of land uses. And they reflect the analysis that was done that, that is the basis for the mitigation, which is the other important piece to keep in mind.
And the other component, which we've talked about in prior meetings, is those trips that stay within the project boundaries as well, which you don't find in some of the other isolated projects, residential projects, because they have to leave their site to go to retail establishments or to work. And, and as we've projected reasonably and conservatively in our mind, that we've minimized that number of the assumption for those that stay within the project boundaries in order to provide a conservative estimate of those delays.
Jack?
Appreciate very much the expert numbers. We're talking 40,000 to 50,000 trips that are not in existence right now coming to Lunen Derry because of the Woodmont development. And so those are different numbers, in a way, than we see on the slides, which are 39 extra cars here, 60 extra cars there. So I appreciate very much 40,000 to 50,000 additional trips in Lunen Derry from that 600-acre development. It will have some impact, and the question is what? And what it's going to cost, and what it's going to cost in time and effort and road structure? So appreciate the numbers.
Yeah, we've got to figure out what that's going to feel to us, you know, that are already, already here.
Thank you.
So that's how we got to decipher that big, big book and to explain it to us laypeople. Anyone else? Mike?
Mike Speltz, 18 Sugar Plum Lane. I want to begin by complimenting the design team because, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I heard them commit to no increase in stormwater discharge from the project as a whole. Did I get that right?
It's typically required of all projects.
No, what's required of all projects is that a site plan or a subdivision plan meet that criterion. But what I heard you commit to was that when we get all of the site plans and all the subdivision plans done, the increase in, and there will not be an increase in discharge from these 600 acres.
For the peak, the peak will be attenuated to match the existing conditions.
Similar to a site plan.
Right, but, but we're talking about here about a 600-acre site plan, so for this particular problem. And I, and that, I think, demonstrates the value of having a PUD because we normally look through a soda straw, we look at a single site, a single subdivision, and yes, each one of those meets the criterion of no increase in discharge. But, and I getting back now to the key point that Lynn made, it's a two-pronged problem here. One is discharge, the other is volume. And you can have, especially as we get flashier rain events over the future years, for whatever reason, the people that are downstream, ask the folks down in Brookview Drive, are seeing the cumulative effects. So you can have each little site or subdivision not discharge anymore. But over time, if you have more and more impervious surface upstream, then, then the volume of water over time, not the rate per hour, which is what they have to hew to, but over time can increase and can lead to flooding. So whoever brought up the fact that, you know, Brookview's down at the end of the pipe, brought back a very good point. So when you look at the memorandum, at least the one that's posted on the, on the web, there are no numbers in it. So we're told we're going to, you know, work with bio-retention. But, you know, how many square feet of impervious surface is that? How much square feet of bio-retention will that take? And I have to say that bio-retention isn't going to do anything for chlorides. Chlorides are dissolved in water, so the water moves through. Even if, even if it is just recharged into the aquifer, it just makes the groundwater salty, which is why Beaver Brook stays salty even in the summer. We've dumped so much salt into the groundwater as the stream is fed by groundwater in the dry months, it still stays salty, which is, excuse me, got us into trouble with the EPA and got us into this total maximum daily load. We're not only sharing it with this new development, we're sharing it with a doubling in the surface area of I-93. So there's, it's a, it's a, it's a real challenge to figure out how, how we're going to do this. And I, I hope that this might be a wake-up call for the, for the town as a whole and private for this board in particular, to, to think about how to deal with a chloride management plan at the town level. It's the flaw that's in this TMDL. There's nobody really held accountable, everybody is. You know, the folks in Derry, the folks that salt I-93, us folks, the people that salt the Shaw's parking lot, we're all contributing. Salt in your soft water machine is contributing. So it's something that we need to look at, that's, and I, I just bring it up because it hasn't been brought up before, and we ought to bring it up. It isn't particular to this project. So I hope that when these additional numbers come in, we'll see a lot more detail, the way we have in, in traffic on stormwater management. We certainly have the ability to predict, because we have a land use plan and we have models for all of the various buildings we want to put in, the amount of impervious surface. With that amount of impervious surface, we can figure out what bio-retention it needs to do the recharge and to control the discharge. And I hope you will look at the cumulative effects of the volume that we're retaining and how fast we're releasing it over time. That's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Ian?
Ann Champa, 28 Wedgewood. I was just going to ask Mike, would, would the, the Mike ropes and plant mitigation work in winter as well as they do in the warmer months? If, since he seems to?
Yeah, probably, you know, that's something Mike should be telling us, not, not you, or you asking him. You probably should ask him ahead of time or something, or maybe at some.
Well, then I'll ask the people from Woodmont, then.
Yeah, because this is, this is a hearing, so you talk to us. You know, this is not a three, or four, or five-way conversation.
Okay. To the people from Woodmont, if anybody would like to answer that, since I'm not an expert and I'm reading this, and, and that was one of my questions.
What are you reading it from?
Because Woodmont Commons now is usually just used for recreation during the winter now. When the, you know, the ground is frozen, there's snow on the ground. But during the winter in the future, with full buildout, there'll be roads in full use. And, and they'll be salted. And I was wondering what difference will that make to the environment? And will their mitigation actually work during the colder weather? To the extent they would like it to.
Intent is it's going to work year-round, but I'll get the specific answer from Jeff Wilson, who's our environmentalist.
Because I think, what's, what's in this is, is general, so.
Right, but that's, I think that's a valid question, if it's going to be workable during the winter. And you must have, you must know some background on the bio, what is that? The biofiltration units for the whole area. Well, they talk about it in this.
We're just talking about the general process, but.
On page nine, it's all about biofiltration.
If you got some information on it for us, Ian, that would be helpful also.
Excuse me?
If you have some information on.
No, I don't, it's just a question of mine, because right now, that whole area.
We'll get the answer for you in writing back to you, okay?
Thanks, I just want to know, I, you know, it's just a question that I thought of, since it's going to be such a distinct difference from what, you know, happens there naturally now. There's a picture on, I'm not sure what page, about a water main going across 93. What happens if four A is not built? Will that water main still go across 93?
We will get into more of the utilities at the May meeting. What was provided was really a snapshot of the discussion to come.
This is an overview of what we are having right now, so there's no, no detail to this.
Well, it shows the, the water main going across in one of the diagrams. But, and we were discussing what happens if there's not a four A. It's something you can bring up at another meeting, that's fine. It's just something I had a question on.
There, there are various connections shown across 93. I would much rather get into this level of information at the next hearing because there will be more information available to the board and the public.
Okay, I noticed there was two connections went across where four A would be and one across Pillsbury Road slash Ash Street.
The technical experts, Mr. Chair, will be available at the next meeting.
Okay, yeah.
That's fine. I had a question about WC 12, if four A is not built. It said there'd be no retail or a hospital east of 93. Well, it seems like people who live there, there's approximately 350 or so residential units in that area would need some kind of service to make it walkable for them because, I'm going to say market baskets, market baskets a little distance away from WC 12, so. Is that an accurate statement, that there really would be retail in there? There must be some portion of, it's, need to be retail for those residents in that area if its residence is in offices only.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to respond directly?
Yes, please.
What I presented this evening is, and we're happy to find that other chart, as Mary suggested, the trip caps are essentially the driving factor in controlling the traffic situation. And as I, if you could go to the conclusions, what we state in the third bullet is that retail, hotel or hospital space could be developed in WC 12 with an equivalent drop in the other office or residential uses. So essentially, that trip cap that was presented in the chart, if that is really our measuring tool, there could be a mix. But in practicality, I don't anticipate a large amount of either retail or the other uses that we identified because it's not going to have all that pass-by traffic that the other roadways would. So we still need flexibility from Alani's perspective, but that's why we developed those traffic trip caps to measure against.
Yes.
So there wouldn't be any moving of retail from one side of the highway to the other to accommodate that or anything else? Okay, it's all, it's all basis, based on the trip generations?
Correct, so there's, there's an anticipated cap for the board to measure against in the future.
Okay. I had a question about the findings on, on Hovey Road. I was listening to what Mr. Farida had to say. And I had a question about the trip generation chart up there, specifically about Hovey Road. Now, I'm sure you could help me out here. I see without exit four A, 19 in the morning and 28 in the afternoon, extra trips. And with four A would be nine and 13. Which, in which direction is that? Is that going north on Hovey or south on Hovey?
Mr. Chair, that would be a combination of in and out.
Yeah.
Both. But Hovey is part of the residential area also.
There's no dispute, that's, that's. There's no dispute. That's, that's, it's a combination of entering and exiting trips from the PUD during that PMP hour, or AMP.
But I'd, I'd like to know if you, you mean it was going to, south to exit four, and then heading like north or south, or going up Hovey Road to exit five and going north?
It will be a combination of both movements.
Yeah.
Again, there would be 300-something residents is north of Pillsbury and 17 intersections on Hovey. And those numbers seem low to me, knowing the traffic that is generated now, and versus what could be with that amount of development in there. It's my own personal feelings and, and as a resident right in that area. Because I, for one, know people who live, who would live near the top of your development, near the cemetery area, who wouldn't go south to exit four to go north on 93. They'd hit, they'd head north on Hovey Road to go to exit five. So there would be more trips going up through Hovey Road to the intersection with Hardy. I just wanna make sure people understand what type of road Hovey is. It's a windy road up north of the project, north of Wedgewood, my road. It's a windy road. It was recently paved, and I thank the town for that. The southern section on Hovey Road was originally called Bitch Hill Road for a reason. It's very steep, and in the winter, it's hard to get up. No joke, I've gotten stuck there. I know we're trying to conserve the salt in town, but that's one road that really needs the salt or some kind of remediation in winter. So Hovey Road is not a typical, you know, straight roadway. And I just want people to be aware of that. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Anyone else? Okay, we'll continue with Section 4.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is the tag team.
Yep.
My name is Tom Goodwin. I'm with Shook Kelly. I'm a principal in the firm, and I've been working with the Woodmont Commons team on the PUD subdivision and site plan standards. And this is really an update on the presentation that we did at the last planning board meeting. We have been working with the staff and with HSH on actually filling in the metrics. What we showed to you in the last meeting were really templates, and we have now filled in the blanks within those templates. So a developer that would be coming forward with a subdivision plan is gonna need to follow the PUD site, the subdivision standards and regulations. A developer that is applying for a site plan approval for a building, or a, or for a building permit for single-family and duplexes would need to follow the PUD site plan standards. So there are three components to the PUD regulations and standards. The first is governing the land use and open space. Those apply to the entire PUD. Those were described in the March 27th meeting. And we updated the, the tables, the use tables and the, the development tables in the last meeting. The second portion of the standards apply to the PUD subarea and type standards. What you're gonna see in the documents are composition principles and standards, subdivision standards, and site plan standards. The third are the detailed written standards, and those apply to the elements within Woodmont Commons, such as signage, lighting, landscaping, and parking. These will be discussed at a future meeting. So the principles and standards, which, with each subarea, there are two pages. The first page deals with the, the standards that apply to that subarea, and the second page has the composition rules, the principles and standards. And what we have looked at with, with HSH are two subareas, WC-1 and WC-5. So WC-1 is a central subarea with residential, retail, commercial, and a mixed use of buildings. So similar to what we showed you in the last presentation, a, an example subdivision is shown, so that you can see how the, the PUD subdivision standards and regulations apply. These are, this is a look at the two cover pages that go along with each subarea. On the left, the, the subarea plans tell you what types of streets, what types of lots, what types of uses, et cetera, are allowed within the subarea. And on the left, there are general rules and standards for the composition of that subarea. So within WC-1, the PUD subdivision standards include streets, blocks, open space types, similar to what we showed in the last presentation. What we have done in this section of it is actually looked at the street types that are within it and updated the, the tables that were shown at the last meeting with actual physical dimensions and requirements for those street. So if you measure a boulevard within WC-1, you can look at the boulevard that is checked on the left, look at the dimensions, and if that complies, then, then it is an applicable street type to use within WC-1. The same thing goes for the open spaces. On the land use plan side of the equation, the land use plans will designate the, the open space types that will be located within WC-1. And the subdivision submittal will identify the type of open space. In this case, it's pointing to a square. And there is a corresponding standard that goes along with that, that tells you what the rules are for that square. Block types within each subdivision are also identified. And in this subdivision example, the block is identified as a village center block. Again, within the standards, the village center block is described, including dimensions around the block. And as long as the submitted site plan follows the rules that were, within this diagram, then it's an acceptable block within WC-1. So the PUD site plan standards are applicable during the site plan approval process or during the building permit process for the single-family and duplex houses. And they include lot types. Site plan is typically prepared or done concurrently with the approval of a subdivision. And the developer preparing a site plan would look at the, the composition principles and the building lot types within the standards to see what requirements they must follow. So again, now this is dealing at the site plan level, so within that approved subdivision, a, a small to medium mixed-use project is coming in, is identified in the site plan, and there are lot types and building type requirements that go along with each submittal. These are just some of the other examples of what we have been working with HSH on to develop. The next subarea that we looked at was WC-5, which is a perimeter subarea. It's a, essentially a single-family zone. It's along Gilcrest Road. This is what would be shown with, with notations on the land use plan for that section. And again, very similar to what you saw in WC-1, there are subarea standards, and there are composition principles and standards that go along with, with that. Now, within this, you'll see a much limited palette on what types of roads, what block types, and what types of uses can be done, used within, within WC-5. So again, with the WC-5 subdivision standards, it, it controls the block types, the street types that are within each subdivision. So the street type that is shown right now is a secondary street, which is a two-way street. And again, the measure you'd use to look at, at the subdivision level is a two-way street diagram that has been developed. The allowable uses within this are controlled. Now, one of the things we do have within this subdivision is we have called for a, a perimeter buffer along Gilcrest Road. So that is shown on the land use plan. There are allowable block types that will be included within the standards. And then again, at the site plan level, there are building types and lot types, very similar to what we saw in WC-1, that will be included within the standards that control setbacks, heights, and other lot requirements. So within WC-5, we have a single-family detached house that is permitted. And what you would look at when a submittal comes in for the building permit process is there's a lot type with the setback requirements, and there is a building type with all the requirements on the heights and other attributes of the And really, we're working with, with staff and HSH to develop the rest of those standards. So this was an update, just to give you an idea of where we're headed with it.
Okay, and the information here is just example only, it's not.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is the current draft, and we have actually worked on the dimensional standards and all that within this document. So this is what you're going to see for all of the subareas and for all, all the lot types, all the building types. So that you, when a submittal comes in, you can look on the composition and standards pages to see if it's an allowed use, what streets are permitted, what block types you should use. And so it's a, it's a, it's a palette that is, that is broken down by subareas.
Much, much.
Any questions?
Okay, we'll do our staff first. Okay, Sean.
Nothing right now.
Okay, Ted, Jane, anything?
Yeah, we just want to mention that we did have a series of meetings with the development team. And I think that we are progressing as far as putting together the standards. We did expand the templates for street types and for building types and, and open space types. And we were sort of fleshing out the specific specifications for each different street type, open space, and, and building type. So I think the sampling that we're showing for very different districts, WC-1 versus WC-5, is, is good, because it's really sort of both ends of the spectrum. The key is going to be how you assemble the pieces, you know, the, you know, the combinations of streets with building and lot types with the integration of open space. And, you know, all framed within this block is really gonna be the key. And I would point out at this point, there's a lot of work to be done there. These are just samplings. And, you know, it's, you know, I know that there's been a lot of discussion about village centers and traditional design and walkable mixed-use compact communities, all the principles of TND. But at this point, it's just as likely that you're gonna get large formats, large-scale, commercial, big-box type developments, which may be fine with a planning board. But it's a type of thing that we need to look at and, and be specific in terms of where that's appropriate, where maybe it's not appropriate, and calibrate the, the, the development standards accordingly. Because, you know, traditional design has everything to do with the width of the blocks, the width of the streets, the footprints of the buildings, the placement of the parking, and those frontages, those areas between the blocks and the street, or the buildings and the streets, and how, you know, how those areas are, you know, accommodating the pedestrians or bicyclists or other modes of transportation besides the, the automobile. So we got a good start here. I think there's a lot of work left to be done as far as putting together all the pieces.
Good, thanks. I'll go through the board, then we'll go to the public. Rick?
I'll sit.
I'll sit. Tom?
No, I have no questions.
Sean?
Sorry, no.
Mary?
I just wondered, I, I know you do have a lot of work to do, but this is a very good beginning, and it's, it's helping us, well, me specifically envision more clearly what you have in mind for each of the different subareas. But where WC-5, you say, bike paths or routes do not exist along Gilcrest Road, but will share the streets within the subareas. Traffic volumes and speeds will be low enough to permit both. Have you driven on Gilcrest Road?
I think what we meant to say is that we've.
Could you just?
Yeah, Michael, please.
I was looking at that as well. The intention is to say, we recognize that there are no bicycle lanes or an opportunity for bicycles on Gilcrest Road, and we're not, we're trying to make sure that we accommodate within the PUD opportunities for bicyclists, because they're not available on Gilcrest Road.
Okay.
So we better think about including that within the, the network of streets and sidewalks and paths within WC-5.
We'd like to include those, but that's not the best spot.
Right, among Gilcrest Road, but, you know, I'm not going to live in your subdivision, but I'd love to bike in your subdivision, because the, it's gonna be gorgeous when it's done. But how do I get there if I can't access that through Gilcrest Road? I mean, do, you know, I would hope that you would look at Gilcrest, say, we have this, you know, this, we have other streets that we're gonna move traffic towards, so that we will, you know, lessen potentially the traffic on Gilcrest, and maybe make that a little less dangerous than it is right now. I biked on that road and, you know, taken my life into my hands, but I'm here, so people were paying attention, and that was good. But, you know, we're gonna have more people. And the goal is to, you know, either we're paving a mile for another bike path, you know, up north. I mean, the, the goal is to increase, decrease cars and increase pedestrian and bicycle traffic. So let's see if we can do something, you know, with the roads that we already have.
We're certainly looking for that balance of connectivity to the rest of the community, while being mindful of the fact that some of these areas are not conducive for the most safe places for these connections. And that's part of the challenge, is coming up with a framework that can allow for smart decisions that come later.
So you guys are building the tunnel under 102, right, or the bridge over?
That's a state road.
Thank you, that's all.
So just a question on the templates. I like the templates, but are they gonna be included in the master plan?
Yes, they are.
Okay, they will be. So looking at some of the specifics here, we have the two-way street one on page 24. It's talking, you know, pavement width, 22 feet to 38 feet. And we have some minimum town standards here. Would that be something we'd be expecting to see a waiver on when we get into that whole process, if we're looking at deviating from town standards?
That's right.
Okay. On page 30, just an architectural question that I don't know the answer to. It talks to transparency and articulation when it's looking at the buildings. What is transparency and articulation? I suspect transparency is windows, but I'm not sure.
That's, that's exactly, that's exactly right. It's the ability to see inside, particularly with certain kinds of buildings along streets, where there's retail and other uses, it's really important that there be transparency. You can see what's going on inside. That's what makes walkable, interesting streets for those kinds of uses. When you're looking at a residential, say townhouse, then transparency into the, into the unit is a different matter. Right? That's what the.
Okay, good. Articulation, Steve?
Articulation is, is, is breaking. Articulation is 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 breaking up facades or buildings in such a way that there's some character and interest. So we will talk about, well, a bay window is an articulation. It's making a flat wall far more interesting, and there are many architectural ways of doing that, but there's scaling elements to make things more human scale.
Okay, great. And I think.
Look like a monolith.
Yeah, exactly. I just wasn't familiar with the term.
The the layperson's definition of articulation, I once had a bank project where I was asked to put windows on the backside of the building to break up the blank appearance of the wall until I explained that that's where the vault was located.
And then they asked for a door?
Unlocked.
Swinging door. But what we've done with, like, you know, CVS is they have just like a fake window, so it's.
I was educated during that process. Those are apparently called blind windows.
Yes. They look like a window from five feet, you get closer, and it's like, that's part of the building.
And then my last question, it may come back to whatever, you know, touch what Ted was talking about, but on page thirty-four and thirty-five, where we're looking at building type and the lot type for the large format retail, we have a minimum lot size, and we don't have any maximums. And I think we need to establish some type of maximum building size for those areas as well, just so we can have some better control over what's going in there. And that's it.
Okay. Laura?
I, I don't have any questions right now. I appreciate the the graphics. It's helpful to begin to put everything together in my mind.
I'm not sure if it's the same question that Lynn just asked, but my, my only thing that I saw in here on WC five, when it says maximum height, three-story building, you don't mean three actually living, three living floors, right? You mean thirty-five feet, i.e., two living floors, and then like a roof to the height of the attic? You know what I'm asking?
We were paralleling the standards that you have for single-family residences that the town has in those zones, like across the street. So you would have thirty-five feet as you define it, and it's exactly the same. So typically, you'd have a house, you would have some room up under the roof that would.
Yeah, but we're not talking, I mean, I'm sorry, maybe I just don't have a perspective of thirty-five feet, but John, maybe you could answer this. We're not talking like three living levels, right?
It could be.
That's exact.
Could be a barn also. I mean, it's, you know, it's a standard across the street in that particular district.
Okay, so that said, then, with that clarification, in WC five, if you're trying to fit in with the existing neighborhoods that abut that area, I don't see a three-story building fitting in along that stretch.
I think where you're having a problem, though, Lisa, is again, across the street, the maximum building height is thirty-five feet. So I think if it says WC five, maximum building height would be thirty-five feet, you won't even be thinking of that, because again, technically, again, across the street, those could be a three-story.
If you have an attic space, if you have an.
Yeah, that's fine.
If you have an occupable attic space up at the top of the house.
Be allowed by current regulations.
Okay.
I just say, I.
So what you're telling me, then, is regular, existing regulations are such that that would exist? Is that what you're telling me?
It could, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Then I guess it's just. But you wouldn't. Ability to envision. You know, you would probably have, it would be a, an attic, you know, apartment or an attic bedroom. From the top. Right.
Peak roof.
That's fine.
Third story could be like a peak roof, so you'd have, you know, skylights and.
Just asking, thanks.
Okay, Maria?
Yeah, my only question is, on page thirty-six, the building type, the dedicated office, and I know we've talked about this at prior meetings, fifty feet we're talking about for office building? I think we talked about that could be five stories. Did we talk about that in the past? That we have took five story, that's what we spoke about?
I think that was more of a question. I don't know that we're really programming for that.
Okay, because I'm looking at, like, the character examples on page thirty-seven.
Right.
And when you look at the character example, and you talk about articulation, that has, to me, has a lot of articulation to it. It's got a lot of, you know, highs and lows to it, and it doesn't look as gawky, I guess, of a building to me. That's one of the visions of a type of look for a fifty-foot.
It's representative, yeah.
So, so fifty-foot high, it would, would, could, could be for a building.
For a commercial building.
For a commercial building.
And the number of stories varies quite a bit. The rule of thumb for office buildings is that, rule of thumb for years has been twelve feet floor to, what they call floor-to-floor. So at fifty feet, you get four floors, at forty-eight feet, is it possible that someone could come up with a really cool scheme and somehow get a ten-foot floor-to-floor? The building would be the same height, one way or the other, and the idea is that the requirements, the articulation, the scale, all of those things have to come with that package.
Right.
But just use a height rather than specifying, you know, floor heights. But that's kind of, that's, that's why when you see a four-floor office building in forty and fifty feet, those tend to go together. That's not to say it couldn't happen.
Okay.
You know?
Yeah, I bring it up only because I believe, John, I believe, prior meetings, you were concerned about the look, you wanted to see examples of.
Yes.
Of a fifty-foot building, and now, so I'm seeing this.
Still trying to find a fifty-foot building among the dairy.
I don't think there is.
Is there one in dairy?
Yes.
Downtown?
Maybe, maybe.
102.
Forty.
That's a good question.
It's forty.
I think the, I think the closest to fifty foot is Manchester.
But I would imagine you would be envisioning these office buildings in certain, I know, I know they're allowable in certain places, like along ninety-three, you know, certain, they're going to be in certain sub areas. It's not going to be everywhere.
That's, that's exactly right.
Right?
There's a total mix that you're allowed to have in the areas. There, there's a limitation on the number of locations and the building heights.
Right.
One of the things that, that, the idea of the introductory pages that talk about how things can be composed, so for example, when you're along the highway, then they can really talk about the highway and and where that is. I think that, and that, but one of the questions that had come up is, is the idea of actually having some pictures of some real-life buildings that get built in so that we're not, you know, you don't look at a table. And it does seem like a good, a good way of starting to think about this and communicate it.
Right, well, that's why, when I, like I said, when I look at page thirty-seven and I look at that small picture, that character example, I mean, I don't, I personally don't have a problem with a look like that in the right particular sub area, in the right location.
Right. And so, you know, on that point, I would refer you back to the briefing document from last month and the table of available uses.
Right.
And for the dedicated office building category.
I didn't bring it with me.
But that's okay, I'd have it.
Yeah.
And I, and I, so I can share right now that, you know, what you would find is that it's allowable in WC one, WC two, and WC twelve.
Okay.
And not those interior areas where it wouldn't fit or wouldn't look right or would be imposing or.
Okay.
Lack appropriate articulation.
Right, and that, and that was my rec, that's my recollection from prior meetings, but I, I just, I just wanted to go over that now.
You need to clarify that it is a lot in WC one, which isn't along the highway percentage.
Right. It's, it's, it's the busy village area.
Those are the things we need to figure out.
Right.
What's appropriate where.
Right.
And it may be fine in WC one, but just be aware of that.
But maybe not smack in the middle.
WC two.
You know, maybe perimeter of WC one type of thing.
Exactly, and that's where the the compositional rules are so important. It's not just, okay, you can put these wherever you want, but.
Right.
The edges should be different than the center, and how does that get assembled?
Right.
We, we thought about it as like assembly instructions.
I almost think about like inside going out.
Yeah.
You know, like, how does that?
Surrounded by ourselves.
That's right.
Okay.
We've got ourselves surrounded.
Okay. Thank you, that's it.
Yeah, just have one question. On the boulevard and the two-way street, both have a notation, on-street parking and bike lane configuration may vary. Would that change the diagrams you have for the rights-of-way? Because they're not shown on this.
Yeah, and it's, it's been a puzzle we've been working on because we recognize that there'll be spots where you want on-street parking and ones that don't, and the challenge is that it starts to generate, well, what if it's a parking on one side, and maybe it's the other side and two sides? And we started to generate lots and lots and lots of diagrams. So we're puzzling a little bit whether it's a note that says, if you have a parking lane, it should be eight feet, for example, as opposed, we were getting to a point where we're showing, it got to be a lot, a lot of examples. So we're trying to get to the basic idea about it, and then, and then show the kind of the menu of things you could do.
Okay, thank you.
I think the, I can sort of add to what Steve just said. I think the right-of-way stays the same, that, but there's variable elements based on what the frontage is on that particular block. So if a boulevard is, is fronting a retail district or a mixed-use district, you may have wider sidewalks, you may have formal tree planting pits, you may have sidewalk dining, you may have on-street parking. If the other side of that block is an open, like a park, or backing up to residential areas, you may have more of a buffering effect where you have, you know, groupings of trees, you may have a, a shared-use trail rather than a formal sidewalk, because there's differences between, you know, that side and the uses there, and what you're trying to achieve in that frontage zone versus the other side. So there'll be variable elements, but the right-of-way will stay the same.
Okay, thank you.
Is something else, Sean?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions, I'm looking through. Page twenty-six, block-type neighborhood, you have a block depth and a block length, and a maximum linear, linear foot perimeter. If I do your maxes, it's about four and a half plus acres, almost four-point-six acres. One of the things I, I don't see on this is a maximum number of units that could be built on something that size. Is that something you intend to put on this?
Yeah, the way, the way it would work is that then you go to, okay, it's time to subdivide or put a use on it, then you could say, well, what are the lot types that you can put on it? Just in the same way you have today, perhaps with a single-family neighborhood, there's a half-acre requirement or quarter-acre requirement. So then you refer to, well, what are the lots that you can put on that? And so, for example, if you wanted to do a single-family detached homes within that, then you would go, if you're in WC whatever, then you go to page thirty-one and say, well, how do the lots, how big do the lots need to be? How big and small can they be? Because they don't get too small, they don't get too big, and where are the buildings and where are the setbacks that happen within it? So the block is, sets up the, 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 the area in which you start to put the parcels. But they might be able to be a little variable, so they're not all exactly the same. Maybe some's, some are bigger and some are smaller, but they're within the, the lot sizes.
So the minimum lot size for, let's say, a single, we're using single-family homes on this particular block, the minimum lot size is thirty-two hundred square feet, the minimum frontage width is forty feet, so if the block is five hundred feet long, then you'll get about eleven or twelve houses on that, on that block.
On one side.
On one side, and then on the same amount.
Twenty-four.
It's a uniform, it'd be the same amount on the other side.
Twenty-four houses on four and a half acres.
Yeah.
And if I look at the picture and the character example that you give on thirty-one, that's what it would look like, the bottom picture.
Could look like.
No, no, that's an example, right?
Right, could look like.
It's a good example of twenty-four homes, that's what that street would look like. Unfortunately, it looks a lot like where I grew up in Lowell, and if you've been to Lowell, this is not really that attractive. And the problem with this type of density is that there's no parking. So the question that I have is, what's that structure in the back when I have the, the property line and I have a, a building and a detached, the bad, detached piece of buildings, what is that, a garage back there?
Yeah.
How do I get back there?
Alley.
So I have an alley between the two buildings.
In the backyard.
In a density that large, with that, with that amount of density.
Yeah. That's one scenario, yeah. The maximum scenario, yeah.
Wonderful one. Okay, thank you.
Prior, a reminder, WC five and probably also along the Gilchrist, and probably WC eleven, along part of Hovey, would be some apple trees. I mean, it's not indicated in, in here, but we discussed that before, but not to, not to lose sight of it.
Mm-hmm.
Because we want to keep at least those areas with our apple tree heritage and everything. And probably building types, I would probably meet with the Heritage Commission, get some input from them, because that's their expertise. They tend to like colonial buildings, peaked roofs, traditional New England. They're open to other ideas also. And then the question I had, this is regards to parking, because it's on-street parking and everything, but with density, at what point are you going to need a parking garage or a parking facility? Is, is, is there like a formula that has determined where it would be located, or with the proximity where, where it's needed anyway?
As far as a parking garage goes, if you were, depending upon how development got clustered in WC one, WC two, and WC twelve, where you've got mixed use in a bunch of things, parking structures could occur, would not necessarily have to occur, depending. There's no necessity, depending upon how it works, but if, if there were opportunities and advantages to condense, compact the development, is the advantage of more open space, for example, to do that, there will be building standards specifically for parking structures and how they get incorporated into development as a whole, so that.
You could make it look like a nice cow barn or something, and there's a parking facility.
That's right, and it'll be articulated, too, I'm pretty sure. Yeah, but I think, I think that we want to be paying a lot of attention to that.
Well, and actually, actually, there were parking structures in the video that we showed in the last presentation, and they were all located behind the buildings.
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
So, yeah.
Either, either hide them or camouflage them. There's still a continuity of the architecture and everything.
Right. Yeah.
Anyone from the public with Jack, beat you in?
Jack Falvey, twenty-two, Cortland. In WC five, pavement width twenty-two to thirty-eight feet, and if you look at the cross-section, you notice that there's parking on either side of that road. So the available space for cars to pass is eleven feet in each direction. The road opposite that, which is Cortland, is forty-eight feet wide pavement. So I don't know what the town standard is, but the density that you're putting in here, along with on-street parking, eleven-foot spaces, and then you figure out that these trees have leaves on them, but most of the time it's snow in these, in these areas several months a year. So you look at the road width that's allowed, and perhaps Al could tell us how wide a fire engine is, and how wide a school bus is.
Yeah, because our road width is twenty-eight feet, that's what's required.
Yep.
To accommodate the fire equipment and also the swing.
This shows, this shows twenty-two feet.
If I recall, I think we asked about the school buses and going up and down the streets, and I think their response was the kids can walk to the corner, and that the bus wouldn't be going down all the streets.
Yeah.
The fire trucks go down all streets.
They'd have to, yeah.
Yeah, they'd have to have to.
But you, but I'm saying, you know, this, these numbers get in here, and then this becomes a standard, and this is the new town standard for this area. So I bring that to your attention, that twenty-two feet doesn't match up with what it's against, which is forty-eight feet. And also, safety as far as parking on either side, and snow doesn't seem to fit. So perhaps, you know, if I would like to guess those subjects.
Right, because we're probably, well, we will get to that level of detail at some.
The level of detail is right here, right now.
This is.
This is not a supposition, this is what, this is what they have in WC five.
Yeah, okay, we'll take a close look at it, Jack.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mike?
Mike Spouts, eighteen, Cigga Plum. I couldn't figure out a good time to ask this question, so if I'm out of order, you can tell me, but we don't have a site plan or subdivision plan, so therefore, we can't make a regional impact determination, if I understand the process correctly.
There is a regional impact. I think it's been addressed with Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission already, and they're part of this process also.
Well, what I'm thinking about is, is the town of Dairy. I mean, can, could you summarize, or could the applicant summarize what? I mean, can, could you summarize, or could the applicant summarize what their involvement has been and what the plan is to involve them?
I know George Seors has been at one of our meetings, I think back in January, and they keep in pretty close touch. So I know I've communicated with George once in a while, and he knows much more than I do, what the detail going on. So I would say that they're very well-informed. Anyone else? Ian?
Excuse me if I just have some mixed questions here, but they're just questions I had. The winter, will there be on-street parking in winter? Because I know Manchester, they have, during snowstorms, have winter snow alerts and they don't allow parking on the streets.
We do in town also.
Right, so what happens to all the cars that are, from the residents that are parked on the street during the winter? Where do they go?
I think it's probably under consideration, probably not at this point.
Okay, I had another question. I noticed in the Village Center areas, there's on-street loading permitted. And I believe these are just two-lane roads. I just like, I don't know much about it, so I was, this is a question, you know, on how things are usually done. When they have service trucks loading and unloading, do they have time restrictions during the day that they're allowed to do that? Or are they allowed any time? And has it worked in developments with loading at various times during the day? And it's just a question I had about, in general, about on-street loading instead of in back alleys.
I think most businesses either do it like at night or later at night or...
Could I hear what they have to say?
Yeah, I think it's under consideration. I don't think they've thought that, that little detail yet. It'll be coming.
I was going to say generally, I think, being New England, there, there will be a circumstance where there may be a small corner shop, and so if they have a loading dock in an alley, maybe too much. And for larger buildings that have quite a bit of deliveries, it'll be a different circumstance. So we need to have an approach that looks at good, good, solid, common-sense solutions, but that there needs to be provision for loading spaces and thought about that in advance so that when site plans come to you, there's guidance.
We got something to...
That's right.
I have also one question on what is defined as an encroachment? Would porches be an encroachment?
Yes.
They would be. Would they, porches be allowed?
Into the front yard setback.
They can go into the setback, so if...
To a certain degree, yeah, yeah.
Is there any maximum amount or any...
Yeah, I think it's, generally speaking, would be like ten feet from the sidewalk.
Okay, would that be a proportion of, is there any maximum proportion that they can go into that setback? If you like, have a ten-foot setback and...
You'd have to set the building further back and then put the porch in front of it. But there's a, there is a max, there's a minimum setback from the sidewalk.
Okay.
Whether the porch or not.
So the general setback may not be actually where the, a building starts, because a porch could intrude into that area.
There's what's called a build-to zone. So within that, say, ten to twenty-five feet, you can place the building. And you can add those encroachments, like a front porch, that can extend.
Or bay windows or something like that? Okay, okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Create some variations, you know, from block to block, create some variation, you know, from house to house.
Right, for interest, I can understand that. Now, we talked about office buildings, and we looked at some more, some pictures that were more contemporary in nature. And, and I know you're on the Heritage Commission, and you just went through the McDonald's review on twenty-eight.
That's still in progress.
Right, right, I know, with the swoosh and everything. But how is that going to be handled in Woodmont? Because we are looking at more contemporary buildings here with a lot of glass. And would it be in the same way or would they be looking for...
At site plan level, it would be the same way. But I think the input here is to put a tone, because you don't want everything all the same anyway, you know? You want a little, little variety. And you can see the difference between, you know, like more the industrial area, that type of architecture versus, you know, kind of what we're looking for, for McDonald's.
Right, but we're talking about office buildings and with the same WC one or, could be WC two. I think it's against ninety-three versus what's existing now with, with Market Basket. And I know that went through quite a design review to add the peaked roof and everything else on that. But I was wondering how something as contemporary in nature can be passed through the Heritage Commission.
Well, I think, well, as I said, you know, I think it's really, you know, the input for the commission. You do want some variety, because there's people that probably want a more contemporary type house. It all depends where we locate it, you know, like we do here. There are, well, because basically your residential housing, we have no say over. That's up to the individual who builds it. But I think in something like this, you can set a tone. And then the detail, they could, I think, work at residential. But yes, when it comes to site plan, then the architecture is, you know, we have special regulations with the architecture.
It can be what? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
We have special regulations for the architecture that cover, you know, commercial and industrial usage and, you know, mixed use also.
Okay.
Yeah, but as far as your own, own house, we don't tell you how to design it or anything.
Well, maybe in a small part you do, but it has to conform somewhat.
Like a little flavor in the neighborhood or something. And that's usually what a builder will look at, because they don't want anything like a sore thumb, because it might not sell.
Never know who might like it. I had a, I had a question.
Even in my neighborhood, there's a few contemporaries, and that's what people want, so...
Whatever floats your boat, as they say. Looking back to when this plan was originally submitted, there was a streets plan. I can't remember the name of the document. It had an extensive listing of street, a lot of diagrams of street widths. Thank you very much. Is that still basically the same as what was presented now?
I think that there were something like thirty-six different types of street.
Right, there was...
And that has been sort of boiled down into a handful of street types.
Okay, but if we're looking at those diagrams, the ones you finally end up with, they'd be very similar to those?
Some of them would, some of them wouldn't. And there's, there's sort of, I'm answering on behalf of the Woodmont team, but I, basically, we're, they're taking some of those types and they're assembling a different, you know, different hierarchy for this particular development. We boil it down into...
They're very nice diagrams in large that you could easily read, see them and read.
Well, the diagrams aren't done yet for the reason of street types.
Okay, well, anyways, I'll take a look back. I did want to say one thing, and we were talking about it tonight, that we're not going to see any five-story buildings in this plan? I, did I hear that or did I didn't hear that?
I don't think you heard that one way or the other. I think what we were talking about was a fifty-foot height restriction in the areas where dedicated commercial office space was an allowable use. If the developer could get creative and put five stories within fifty feet, then I think you could see that. But it would be, it would, it would be the unusual circumstance where that was possible.
Okay, thank you. I just, I just want to reference that again, streets plan, because on that, with that, what did you call it again?
The palette.
The palette showed five-story buildings in there. And they must have been used for illustration purposes only, but, so they wouldn't be the norm. They'd be occasionally inserted if...
I don't recall that specifically, but I know that the height restriction would be what governs what could be built on the side of the street.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else? We will continue this to the eighth of May.
I'd like to make the motion that we continue this to the eighth of May.
Second by John. In discussion by the board, this is a continuation of, you know, the master plan. See no discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If there's a nay, abstentions, show affirmative. And this public hearing is continued to May eighth, seven p.m., right here. This is the only official notice.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a question first, Mr. Chairman. The town, the town calendar on the website has a tentative meeting scheduled for April twenty-fourth. I don't see a need for that meeting at this point in time, but I just want to confirm that with everybody.
The applicant is certainly not asking to be heard that evening at school vacation week, first and foremost.
Yeah. So it might be appropriate to remove it from the website?
Great, thank you.
Yes.
I think, just, I mean, in fairness, I think it was a concept that was reserved well before we got into the detail.
I agree.
And it's just not necessary at this point in the sequence. And interfering with vacation week, it doesn't make any sense either.
Amen.
So there's no, no meeting scheduled for the twenty-fourth. Everyone going to enjoy their vacation.
Thank you.
Any other business? Seeing the weather, this Mary has a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Turn off your computers, everyone, please.
Turn your monitors.